I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, February 7th. We'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could please have a moment of silence for Julie Thompson, who was married to Tommy, who we all love so much, she did a great job, and for Elizabeth Riccolo, who was married for many, many years to Sam Riccolo. Denise, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Olson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here. We will go to announcements, and I believe Southern California Edison would like to make an announcement this evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. Jeff Lawrence with Southern California Edison, here to make an announcement on our current Stage III rationing plan. As previously committed, Southern California Edison has been routinely assessing opportunities to adjust the current rationing levels. Factors that we consider include water supply, reservoir forecast, customer demand, groundwater recharge, well monitoring data, and various other factors. And as you all know, recently Mother Nature brought us some much-needed relief about a couple of weeks ago, the ideal type of storm to be able to recharge our Middle Ranch reservoir. Within one week, our reservoir level increased by 146 acre feet, and that brought the reservoir level up to 283 acre feet. And that's up from about 11% of its capacity, which was a near historic low that we reached in November, and that we're now up to 27% of the reservoir capacity. So we have completed a series of water system assessments since that rain event occurred, and we've identified an opportunity to make an immediate adjustment to the current rationing levels. And that will affect the customers within the city of Avalon, which include Hamilton Cove, as well as customers that reside in Middle Canyon and are directly fed from the Middle Ranch reservoir. We continue to assess other water systems on the island and seek opportunities to adjust the rationing levels there as well. But without the luxury of having an open water reservoir, the groundwater hydrology takes a little more time to study, and we want to see sustained results as well. But we're hoping in the near future, we might be able to make an adjustment island-wide as well. But the current adjustment that we intend to make effective immediately will affect over 90% of the customers in Catalina that reside in Middle Canyon and Avalon. So for those customers that are currently either at 40 or 50% mandatory rationing, we're going to adjust them to the 25% rationing that was in place during Stage II. Water storage, yeah, it's good news. And because of the water storage in the reservoir level, it provided this opportunity to make this effective immediately. As soon as the rain events occurred, we were immediately studying the groundwater recharge, awaiting the reservoir read at Middle Ranch, and began immediately assessing the data, making recommendations to our upper management. And we're not going to wait to send out letters of communication to customers. It's effective today for the Middle Ranch and Avalon customers. Additional details, customers will revert back to their Stage II allotments effective immediately, but for those customers that received approved variance requests in Stage III, that'll be the basis for calculating the 25% rationing. So we're going to use the most recent information that we have, as opposed to going back to just the baseline use to calculate the 25% rationing. So hopefully, customers that have had situations change, there won't be a need for any more variance requests from those customers. Allotment ceilings will remain in effect only for irrigation customers, so there won't be any ceilings in place for residential or commercial customers at this time. We are still under Stage III water rationing, so I want to make that clear. We are adjusting the rationing level under our Stage III water rationing plan, and so the restrictions and prohibitions on nonessential water use are still in effect under Stage III. And we'll continue to evaluate opportunities to adjust rationing levels, but likely won't make any changes to the stage rationing that we're in until after the rainy season, because we're hopeful that the rain will continue, and perhaps we won't need to be in Stage II either. But we'll just need to assess the data and see what the rainy season brings us. In terms of timing, as I mentioned, the adjustments will be effective immediately. Ads will be run in the local newspapers the week of February 12th and February 19th to get the word out to the community. And then we'll be also contacting several local stakeholders over the next couple of weeks, including our customers in the interior, letting them know what our initial assessment tells us about the water system, which there is some favorable information, but that we need to study it over a few weeks to make sure it's sustainable, and that we can make some changes to the rationing level without making decisions that we have to go back and change. We want to make sure if we adjust the rationing level, it's going to stay there for the long And then for customers that are impacted by this, again, which are customers that reside in Avalon and Middle Canyon, we'll be sending out water allotment letters in early March is what we're targeting. The initial results from the interior do look favorable, and we'll continue to study those results. But I want to stress to the community, we're still not out of the drought yet. While we're encouraged by the recent increase in the water level, we haven't seen this type of rainfall in over five years, almost six years now, we still are only at 27% of the reservoir's capacity. So right now, that brings us significantly above the Stage II trigger, or the Stage III trigger, but we're still below that Stage II trigger, which is 300 acre feet. So it's premature to discontinue all your rationing and conservation efforts, but we can ease the burden at this time, which we're very excited to announce. And as we committed to, we'll continue to perform system assessments on the opportunities to adjust rationing levels, and then we'll also continue pursuing projects that bring additional water supply and available grant funding opportunities for us. That plan will not change just because of the recent rain events.
Well, I'd like to thank you for what seems to be expedient, an expedient answer to the rain that has been falling. I know that there's concern in the community that, when's Edison going to come back? And I think you've come back in a stellar amount of time. So I thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
What was the acre feet in actual water in the reservoir right now? I'm sorry.
283 acre feet.
That's okay. That's not the aquifers or nothing. That's just the water. It's in the.
Correct, in the open air reservoir. Yeah, the surface water.
The surface water.
Yeah.
You've told us some really obvious stuff tonight, and I'm not that excited about it. I want to know what you guys are doing for the community that we've asked you to do, which is, because if the reservoir was still full, I think that would be a deterrent to you guys moving forward with providing the community with a level of water. From our desalination units, we were talking about the pipeline to Hamilton Cove, we're talking about storage. We want an update on that. I mean, you told us, you just gave us a lot of information on something that's obvious. It rained, and we got more water in the reservoir. If the reservoir was full and it filled up from this, I would still hold you guys accountable, and I'm going to. We're going to the highest levels of California authority and decision-makers, so we can move forward with providing the community, get us out of this situation, so in three years, we don't get back into it. We want a 30-year plan. We want to know where the test results are that your expert came in and did. We want to know why the west end of Catalina Island, you spent tens of millions of dollars down there in million gallon tanks, new pipelines, you drilled new wells, you also dried one up. So you're destroying our natural resources?
An impact of the drought.
Yeah, that's exactly what you're doing. You guys are supposed to be experts, you're supposed to be on top of what you're doing for our community. I think you're doing a poor job at the highest levels of your company. I'm ashamed, really, of what we're getting from you. Do you have any updates for us tonight on?
So tonight, I'm not on the agenda, so I had three minutes to give an update on this decision. I'm on the agenda next week, where every month, I give you an update on our grant funding strategy and our water projects. And I will be back in two weeks to provide that update to you. As I mentioned at the conclusion of my update, nothing has changed in terms of our pursuit for grant funding and projects that bring additional sources of water to Catalina.
Nothing has changed. Nobody's been talking, none of our staff has gotten phone calls. Every day, I have to deal with this from my constituents. They want to know what Edison's doing. There's people that are afraid they're going to have to close down their businesses.
We just reduced the level of rationing for your customers?
That doesn't matter. We're supposed to be decision-makers that can focus on the future 30 years ahead. Somebody wasn't thinking 30 years ago, but we're trying to get ahead of the game now, finally, for once, because we keep getting the same thing from you. As soon as the reservoir fills up, you guys come in here, and you take us off water rationing, and everything's good again, for three years. We want the 30-year plan. That's what I want to see. I'm not going to be impressed until we start getting, you know, I don't see how, I've said enough. That's good.
All right.
Yeah, just one more question, Jeff. In three years, we've been asking for Mr. Height to show up if possible. I know he's a busy man. He's the boss. We've been asking to have him come to one of the meetings. I understand he goes to a lot of the service clubs and does a little talking. It would sure be nice to have him come up to one of the council meetings with you, if possible, a couple of weeks when we have our next meeting for the water update. I know he's a busy guy, but it's been three years down the line, it would be nice to hear back from the boss.
Okay. I sincerely pass that along, just in terms of what topic, just.
The water.
Just, you want to talk about water in general?
Talking a little more water. Because last time he left here, he was the water expert on the island, if I recall.
He's not an expert.
Last time.
That's what he claimed to be, though, yeah.
But anyway, if at all possible, I'd like to have him, see if he can make a precedent at one of the meetings.
And again, we had this discussion a while back about if you have questions, get those questions out, so when he does come, he can speak to those, because the bashing isn't effective. So, thank you.
Wait a minute. You mean there wasn't a good communication last time?
What do you mean, last time?
The last time Ron Height was here? Is that what?
Oh, no, no, no. I'm not saying that at all. I don't even remember the last time Ron Height was here, to be quite honest. So maybe I wasn't even on the council then.
My point well taken.
So anyway, so thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
And it is good news, and I think people in the audience are happy to hear this. So thank you. Okay, we're going to have one other quick announcement by Audra McDonald.
Good evening, Council. Last Friday, myself, Luis Rubio from the City Transportation Concepts, Frank Dot, Brett, a couple other people, and the eBus people all met at the Transportation Concepts Maintenance Facility in Redondo Beach. The purpose of the meeting was to meet all of us together and talk about some of the problems that we've been having with the steering issues on the buses. It was a very productive meeting, and I'm happy to report that eBus agreed that the steering needed to be permanently redesigned and fixed, and they have taken that bus that same day down to their Downey plant. When they are finished with the repairs, we will all convene again at the plant before we ship the bus over to the island and agree to the fixes. After that's done, then we will be sending one bus over at a time to have the same exact repairs done, so that all three buses have the same exact steering fix. And I think it was super productive.
Right.
And I want to get those buses back on the road, because they're not as fun to ride as the temporary bus.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I would like to ask, is that the only problem wrong with the buses right now? You know of the steering? That's the main problem right now?
That's the main concern.
Took them out, okay.
Correct.
Okay, Audra, you've worked really hard on this, and I'm having a hard time with the buses. I mean, not just me, but it's staff, people in town, just because they keep breaking down, and we can't get a consistent schedule for them, because they're broken down sometimes, and people have a hard time digesting exactly what we're doing with the buses. I think we need to eventually set a precedence for eBus and let them know that if they can't keep these buses running, we're going to have to return them, because they would be categorized as a lemon. And the county paid a lot of money for these, as well as the matching grant that we chipped in. So I think the effort that you made is really honorable, trying to keep the whole program going, because it's brand-new. And I just want to let you know, if those buses have to be pulled offline, it's not your fault. There's design flaws that could be wrong with them. We're talking about it now, and we're trying to keep the buses going, but I've never had a vehicle where every day, you have to work on it. And that seems to be what we're doing here. And I just don't want to be responsible for the taxpayers' money that's going to a product that's really not, it might not be good enough, it might not be brand-new. I mean, we want to support the technology. That's what we wanted to do, is get on board, be a little greener community, try to contribute, even though our generating station is powered by fossil fuel. It's pretty much high efficiency, but we're still having problems. So I just want to let you know, you're doing a good job. It's just, the buses have, it's the manufacturers, they basically, they got to deal with some of the flaws, the design flaws, or whatnot.
Well, we're hopeful that, we're going to give them a chance. We're all going to go there, and then we're going to see what they do. I can say that Enzo, who you've met, is a great guy.
Yeah.
We're going to be trying to focus on dealing with Enzo more than Chris, because that's been challenging, as you know.
Yes.
So Enzo was amazing.
Yeah, he's a good guy. He's fun to work with, too.
Yeah. So I left the meeting confident. I think Luis left the meeting confident. Unfortunately, Derek couldn't be there. So I left it positive. Now it's in their court.
All right, you do.
And I'll keep you guys posted regularly.
Great job.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're getting into general business, which are taken out of order, and the first item is?
Mayor, you do have special counsel here for this item. You may want Special Counsel Ms. Winder to explain the issue to the council and its protocol in this regard.
Is this the tree item?
Yeah. There are actually two tree items.
Okay.
And so let us go over the procedure first, and then.
Okay. And then I need to recuse myself, because my cousin is involved in this.
Let me just hang on. I got to tell the other attorney to call in. I just did. Okay. Just so you know, Ms. Winder is from my law firm. She serves as the city prosecutor on this matter. She'll be presenting evidence. She'll go over that. Because she and I are from the same firm, state law does not allow me to advise the council on this matter. And so we have a conflict law firm that we've used before. It's the law firm of DePere and Rosenblatt. And so Ken will be calling in, and we can now call him in. And he will be your counsel for this matter. So any questions that you have, not of the city prosecutor, but of, you know, just general legal advice, Ken is your attorney.
You have new messages. That line.
Where's that coming from? Oh, God, the phone call.
That line. You have new messages. Welcome to the best, best, and. Please hold while I confirm your passcode. Thank you. Your passcode is confirmed. Please enter the following two numbers separately. First, the client number, followed by the pound or hash key. Now, enter the matter number, followed by the pound or hash key. You must enter five digits exactly for. Please wait for the tone. Then say your name and press the pound or hash key.
City of Avalon.
When you hear the tone, you will be the third person to join the meeting. Joining the meeting.
City of Avalon. Hello, Ken DePere here for the tree issue.
Yes, I'm here, Daniel Hudson.
Well, thank you.
So the first item is the 214 Beacon Street?
I believe that's the item, correct.
Oh, it's 220, I think, isn't it?
214 is.
What's his address? 220?
I've always known it as 214 Beacon.
Okay, so just for the record, Councilmember Sampson is recusing himself from this matter due to relationship with the people that reside in one of the homes affected by the tree, to avoid the appearance of impropriety.
I'm sorry, which councilman was that, and which property was that?
Sampson on the 214 Beacon Street matter.
Yes, and which property is he related to?
220. 220 Beacon Street, the house below it.
220. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Charlene Winder. I am the city prosecutor for the city of Avalon, as Scott previously introduced me. I will be representing the city's code enforcement department for purposes of this matter. Tonight, you will be provided with the task of making a determination of whether two eucalyptus trees on the property located at 214 Beacon Street constitute a public nuisance. If you do determine that these trees constitute a public nuisance, you can order abatement. And if that abatement is not done by the owner, then the city will have the ability to do that, as well as part of that decision. Various conditions constitute a public nuisance, in accordance with Avalon Municipal Code. I believe the sections that apply here are 4-11.102. Public nuisance is any condition or use of property that is detrimental to the property of others. That can include dangerous conditions to public health, safety, or welfare, to adjoining properties, property owners, or property values. You will hear testimony tonight, along with the exhibits and the staff report, about the two eucalyptus trees on this particular property. Certainly, you'll hear that there have been complaints about the untrimming of the trees. These two trees have been overhanging on two other properties. You'll hear testimony about that. But also, there were growing concerns in the past few months, that especially with respect to eucalyptus trees, there's a potential for root failure that could cause the tree to fall down, and also cause damage to neighboring properties, and could potentially hurt people who may be within those buildings. Due to these concerns, related to these two trees located at this property, and several other eucalyptus trees in the property, the cities undertook or engaged the services of an arborist who conducted a risk analysis of these trees, along with other trees in the city. A copy of his report, his name's Mr. Chris Falco, is attached as part of your staff report. You'll additionally hear testimony that essentially summarizes that report. But basically, at the end of the day, he opines that there's a possible likelihood of root failure for these trees, that could potentially have severe consequences to the public health and safety, particularly because of the three properties that this particular tree could impact. That's my preliminary statement. I will submit on that. What will occur next is if Mr. Hudson has comments, or has a preliminary statement, he can make them as well, and after that, I will call my first witness.
So I'm invited to make some preliminary comments? Is that what you said?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. I hope it's not a moot point. We had quite a windstorm up here last night, and I hope the tree didn't fall over down there in the meantime. I understand you're getting some weather now. The trees have been on my property since I've owned them in 2004, and we have never experienced any rot or failure of the trees beyond natural shedding of the branches. And we were requested recently to trim the trees, which we did at significant expense. Now, maybe things didn't move along quickly enough, but sometimes it's difficult to do on Catalina Island. And we did trim the trees as required. I think we spent $1,200. My understanding of the law associated with trees overhanging other properties is that other property owners are entitled to trim abortion over their own premises, but we did, in fact, trim the trees at the city's request, for an expenditure of $1,200. I guess one of the difficult things for me is that I am now being asked to remove the trees, and there is, according to my inexperience, I know direct evidence of a imminent failure or root rot in the trees. I really enjoy the trees. They provide shade. They have been trimmed, and I would very much like to keep the trees. I'm a tree hunter. I would be okay with or willing to compensate for an annual inspection, or a more detailed inspection of this particular tree. I think that generic phrase, that there's a potential for root failure, could be used on just about any tree. And I would like to hopefully figure out a way where we can compromise, keep an eye on the tree, and the tree stays, and the tree is safe. And that's my preliminary statement.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call Code Enforcement Officer Miguel Bonilla. As you approach, Mr. Bonilla, what I'm going to do is I'm going to provide you with a copy of the staff report. It has attachments, I believe, of pictures that you have taken, and letters that you have written, that I would like you to note for the council. Mr. Bonilla, are you employed by the city?
Yes, I am.
What is your position?
Code Enforcement Officer.
How long have you been a Code Enforcement Officer?
Five years.
What duties does your position entail?
I investigate citizen complaints, issue court citations. I also do animal control. Investigate quarantine animals, animal bites, bite registrations, taking vehicles.
And I just want to clarify for the council that one of your tasks is to investigate code enforcement complaints?
Correct.
And seek compliance with the Avalon Municipal Code?
That is correct.
Okay. Are you familiar with the property at issue today, 214 Beacon Street?
Yes, I am.
How are you familiar with it?
There were complaints about the property back in January, beginning of January of last year. The first investigation was conducted by a previous code enforcement officer, who's, you know, is not with us, but I took on the investigation of the property the end of April, beginning of May of 2016.
Can you describe what the nature of the complaints with regard to the trees are?
From the complaints that I got from the first, the beginning of it, was the overgrown eucalyptus trees located at 214 Beacon, that would pose a threat to the neighboring properties, as well as the public safety.
I want to refer to, as the first attachment to the staff report, it's in front of you. It appears to be a letter written by you on about May 14th, 2016. Could you turn to that, please?
I have it in front of me.
Can you describe this letter to the council, please?
And on May 2014. And, um, on May 2014, after I conducted the investigation of the property at 214 Beacon, um, I took pictures of the site and I did see that the untrimmed eucalyptus trees were located at the property that could pose a threat to the property and neighbors and properties and, and the public safety. Um, I'm not a tree expert, but the, but I did see the overhang of the, uh, the branches to the neighboring property was 220 Beacon as well as the Casa Mariquita Hotel, which is right behind it, uh, for the second tree.
So you prepared this letter, correct?
I did.
And, and did the letter require, um, the property owner to, to do anything with the trees?
And my later, um, the letter that I wrote, they, I requested that they check the condition of the eucalyptus tree, um, which was done. It was, they did trim the, uh, the trees after the, uh, a little, little after the, uh, 30 days, but they did do that. So there was compliance to the letter, the first letter that I sent out.
Okay, so this is the May 2016 letter. Is this a true and correct copy of the letter that you wrote around that time?
Correct.
And, and did you, and how did you send that?
A certified mail.
Also attaches a couple pictures. They're black and white, I apologize for that, but, um, is, is that a reflection of the trees at issue?
I recall taking these pictures, yes.
What occurred, so, okay, so after you did this letter, you said that there was some tr- trimming involved. What occurred after that?
Um, we received more complaints about the, uh, condition of the trees and, and the, unsafe. Um, basically, that's when I gave it to your office to follow up on and do the, uh, once again, I'm not a tree expert, so you guys, the hired arborist or the city did, to conduct a formal investigation of the trees.
At the end of the packet, there are some pictures designated that were taken on October 4th, 2016. Can you turn to those photos, please?
Yes.
Which packet?
It's at the end of the staff report.
I get it.
And it is, I want to say the last five pages. It's, first page says, "Eucalyptus Trees at 214 Beacon Street, photos taken on October 4th, 2016."
Yes.
Mr. Bonilla, d- can you flip through these pictures and let me know if you recognize these photographs?
Yes.
Uh, did you take these photographs?
Yes, I did.
Were these, the photographs taken, um, of the trees at the subject property?
Correct.
Can you look at the first set of photos and describe to me, um, the first tree? It appears that it's overhanging on a, on a ha- over a home.
That's the 220 Beacon. Uh, yes, I took that picture from underneath the house.
Is that the, is that the, is that the 214 Beacon Street house?
Uh, it was taken from the angle of the 220 Beacon, yeah, facing the 214 Beacon.
But the picture reflects the home at 220, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The second photo reflecting the tree over a home, is that 214 Beacon Street? Is that the Beacon Str- 214 address or the 220 address?
220 address.
If you could flip to the page, the next page, and describe to the council, um, what this, these pictures are intended to depict?
Um, the last is, they're overlapping the Casa Mariquita, of the roof of the Casa Mariquita. I mean, the overhanging to the roof of the Casa Mariquita, on the last two. They were taken from the, from that angle there, cus- at the hotel.
I want to clarify that you said the last few photos are pictures of the other eucalyptus tree on 214?
Correct, the other eucalyptus tree.
And they're overhanging at, over the Casa Mariquita Hotel? So after you conducted tha- that inspection in October, are you aware of what occurred with the trees after that?
Um, the city hired an arborist to, to do the investigation on the, um, condition of the trees, and that's when I wrote the, uh, the second letter on December 20th, 2016, after I defined this from the, the arborist that was hired by the city.
And you're referring to the December 20th, 2016 letter that you wrote to Mr. Hudson?
Correct.
That's attached to the staff report?
Correct.
And what did that letter, um, provide?
Um, it was declare an abatement, um, based on the root failure of the eucalyptus trees, um, and on the unsafe, uh, condition of it.
Did you send this letter to Mr. Hudson?
I did.
How did you send it?
A certified letter, certified mail.
And this letter's a true and correct copy of the letter you sent on that date?
Correct.
I have nothing further.
Do I have a response to that, uh, letter? Um, the second paragraph of the letter provides that the, um, due to the ideal structural roots, due to the confined space, they pose a likelihood of risk for root failure over the next three years, um, which is not saying that they are imminent threat of failing. I'm looking for a way to trim, make sure that, uh, tree branches are away from the other structures and keep the tree alive.
Mr. Hudson, do you have any questions for Mr. Bonilla at this time?
Uh, was there any further trimming done after, uh, the, uh, December 20th date?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'm, uh, I haven't personally been there to see what has or has not happened, but my understanding is that the trees were trimmed and they were trimmed away from the neighbor's property. Are they still overhanging neighbor's properties?
Not that I'm aware of.
So now...
It's the root failure that's concerned now.
Can you just clarify that, please? Are the trees still hanging over the neighbor's property?
Not that I'm aware of. I just came back, actually. It was gone for, for a week.
So the main issue is the potential for a, a failure of the root and to cause the tree to fall and cause damage?
Correct, that was the reason for my letter, yes.
Is there not some way that we could establish an investigation on a regular basis to determine whether the trees are truly ready to fall?
I think that's why we're here today. That's one of the things to be discussed. I don't think that's Mr.-
Yep.
In Mr. Bonilla's preview.
It's not.
Well, I, I, I'm just throwing that out there. I, I know that, you know, quite a few of the trees in, in Avalon are in confined spaces, and, um, I'd hate to think that, that every one of them is going to experience total root failure and fall over soon.
Mr. Hudson will have an opportunity to question, um, Mr. Bonilla and, and my, my one other witness. He'll also have the opportunity to address the council in his closing remarks. So I would ask that unless there are any further questions of Mr. Bonilla, that he, he be excused.
That's fine. But may we ask questions of Mr. Hudson at some point?
Uh, oh, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bonilla. You may sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But don't leave, just sit down.
Last witness is Mr. Dennis Jache.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Jache. I, I've provided the, a copy of the staff report in front of you. Um, I will ask you to refer to it, um, as I ask you questions. Can you please, um, state your position with the city?
Uh, Director of Public Work.
And what does your position, um, what does your position entail? What are your duties?
Uh, several duties with the infrastructure of the city, um, maintaining roadways, um, pipelines, sewer facilities, saltwater system, cleanup, maintenance of the streets and so forth.
Are you aware of the property located at 214 Beacon Street?
Yes, I am.
How so?
I have, um, been up there to take a look at it a couple of times, and then, uh, I made contact with the arborist to come out and do an evaluation.
Am I correct in my understanding that you were the person that coordinated, um, the hiring of the arborist?
That's correct.
Can you provide a summary of what you, your communications with that arborist and what he, what he did?
Um, my communications with him, uh, were to come and look at, uh, the subject properties and some other, uh, trees on the island that were, uh, questionable of their integrity.
And the did, and the arborist, did he actually come out and conduct a, an evaluation?
Yes, he did.
What was his name?
WCA, uh, was the company, and I'd have to look in the report to see what his name was.
About five or six pages into the staff report, there is a document entitled "City of Avalon 12816 Tree Assessment." Do you see that?
Yes, um, his name is Chris Falco.
And you hired Mr. Falco to conduct, uh, an assessment of the trees in question, is that correct?
That's correct.
Can you flip through the pages and confirm whether this report was the report he prepared?
Pardon me?
Was this a co- is this a true and correct copy of the report that Mr. Falco prepared? And he transmitted this to you after he conducted his assessment, is that correct?
That's correct.
Can you provide a general summary of what Mr. Falco found with regard to the trees at issue? And feel free to flip through and note, um, page numbers for the council's reference.
Okay. Uh, specifically, I believe we're talking about two trees, tree number two and tree number three. Um, his evaluation is, is on page five. Um, I'll just skip down to the consequences of tree number two. He states that the tree is medium in size, the consequences of failure would be severe to a person and significant to a building. Going down to tree number three, um, on page six, the consequences. He states, uh, since the tree is medium in size, the consequences of failure would be severe to a person and significant to a building. That's, uh, that's about it, unless you need more.
Based on your review of the report, did Mr. Falco opine that there was s- some risk of failure involved with regard to these two trees?
I believe if you were to paraphrase his, his, uh, information on page five and six, you could determine that there is possibility of failure.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Pardon me?
I have no further questions, Mr. Hudson, or the council can direct questions to you.
Um, reviewing the arborist report, um, but I, I'm certainly available to answer any questions from the council.
I have one clarif- I'm sorry, I have one clarifying item. In the arborist's report, he, it seems to indicate, he refers to the trees as being located at twenty, 220 Beacon Street. I just want to clarify that, that the trees that he actually, uh, observed were at 214 Beacon Street. Is that correct?
Yes.
I agree. The, the number two, uh, likelihood of failure, the tree is in fair health and has no significant structural defects. Tree most likely does not have ideal root structure, most likely does not have ideal root structure due to the confined space. Type of failure is a likely type of failure, if there was a failure, which has a likelihood of failure of possible in the next three years.
What, could you repeat that?
I'm, I'm reading the first paragraph of tree number two, lemon-studded gun, talking about the, the fair health of the tree. And being in such a tight space, yes, if it fell, it, it may well hit a structure or even a person. But the report does not really appear to say that it is in imminent danger of falling.
On page five of the arborist's report, Mr. Hudson's indicating that, under the description of the likelihood of failure, the arborist pointed out that the, um, likelihood of failure is possible in the next three years.
I also pointed out that the tree is in fair health and has no significant structural defects in the trunk or crown.
Mr. Hudson, do you have any questions for Mr. Jache?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Uh, does the council have any questions for Mr. Jache?
No.
I'll ask at this time that he be excused. I'll make my closing remarks and then, um, and answer any questions.
Can we ask Mr. Hudson questions?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes. Oh, absolutely.
Is this the time to do that?
Yeah, that, actually, that would be correct.
Uh, Mr. Hudson, I'm Ann Marshall, the Mayor of the City of Avalon. Um, so, one of the residences at that, that beacon location is yours, that you stay in?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes? And, uh, how often do you ca-
Yes.
And what, is that the 220 location or 214 location is yours?
There's, I believe, really, the 214 upper and lower. There are occupants in 214 lower, and we come to the upper unit when we can.
On 214. And when was the last time you were on the island?
Um, probably about six months ago.
Okay, and when you stay here, how long do you stay at a time?
Uh, as long as I can, sometimes a couple of weeks, sometimes a cu- a month.
Okay. Um, so you had said, you know, y- your experienced eyes have looked at the tree. What experienced eyes do you have as an arborist?
Um, well, I certainly don't have formal training as an arborist. Um, but I, I read, uh, maybe I read the, the report a little bit differently. In summary, it says, based on categorization of the above risk factors, this tree is currently presenting a overall low risk to persons and a moderate risk to buildings.
Okay. You said that, uh, the trees were on the property when you purchased the property in the nineties, I believe you said, something like that?
Uh, no, ma'am, it was 2004, I think.
I'm sorry?
It was around 2004-
Oh, 2004.
-how many trees were there.
And the trees were already on the property?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have- Okay, do you have any idea how much those trees have grown in the diameter since you've owned that property?
No, fair question, they have grown, yes, but I don't know relatively how much.
Would you say doubled in their diameter in the last 20 years or however long that is? Not 20, however long that is, 12 years? Do you think they've doubled in size? I mean, I don't know the growth of a eucalyptus, to be quite honest with you, but I guess...
Nor do I, but Catalina has great weather that it might have grown more than your regular lemon-scented gum, but I'm not, I'm not sure really how much or quantitatively how much it has grown during the time I've owned the house. I'm looking more at the characterization of the risk as low to persons.
Okay, and on page 13, there's the picture of the lemon-scented gum up on that wall, and there was a comment made that looked like that wall had been repaired at some point. Has that wall been repaired since you've owned the home?
No, I'm not sure who did any of that work down below the tree. I know someone came and cut down all my bougainvillea one day.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch that. And let me ask another, what kind of insurance do you have in, in the case of that tree falling, falling on a family and killing a couple of them? What kind of insurance do you have?
Well, I kind of object to the characterization of killing people with the tree, but I do have insurance and I note that there is a possibility of these type of accidents. I cannot specifically say what the limits are, what type of general liability insurance that I have, but I do have it and I would be happy to provide some sort of summary of it if you would like.
Okay. I mean, in the one part of the report, it says, in turn, the likelihood of impacting a target is high for a building, and that building has people that reside in it, correct?
Yes, sometimes, there's people, myself and my son upstairs, and I'm sure that there's people at 220, and there may be a tenant down below in the lower part of 214.
Okay, I don't have any other questions at this point.
Does the city have any idea what the cost associated with removing a tree is? Anyone?
Dennis, do, I know the company's done some tree removals, not to draw them in, but I know they've done some eucalyptus trees in recent times.
Yes, I would be speculating, I don't know what it would cost to remove these trees or one of them. Is that your question?
Yeah.
Do you tie with the city tree removal?
Well, no, I'm going down a line of questioning of, you know, one, do we know how much it costs to remove a tree? Two, questions regarding all these other trees, did we bring a company out? Was there any discussion with this owner about possibly piggybacking and, you know, given that we had questions about this tree, did we talk to Mr. Hudson about piggybacking on to having his tree removed at the same time?
Yes, not with Mr. Hudson. May I, may I speak?
Sure.
To Councilmember Cassidy's question, upon my arrival, I had continuous complaints regarding the tree and the dangers to adjacent residents that they believed it posed. Contact was made directly with, quote, "his representatives," who changed during the six-month period, was one individual, said, "We'll look at it." We had crews, the island company, I believe, had crews in town that were doing tree work. We suggested, gave them the names of those crews to, that they could work with so that it would minimize the cost to them. For whatever reason, that did not come to fruition. This happened on at least a couple of occasions, and I don't remember the representatives' names. There was a first one and then the second, who manages, I believe, or is the property manager, or, and so, so there was an initiative on the city's part to try and make this as easy as possible and still respond to the concerns of people who live there, who complained about branches falling, who were concerned because of the roots, the shallow roots and things, that the tree might fall, because the Southern California Edison lines that were adjacent to the tall trees. So, they were voicing continued concern over the trees, and we voiced those to the representatives of Mr. Hudson.
The first representative left on medical leave and Janice Dorsey informed me of, I believe it was Davy Tree, on the island, doing work, which we did attempt to get them to do work for us, but our understanding at that time was that the city wanted the trees trimmed, not removed, and so we did that trimming. Are you referring to the electrical lines that are on the other side of the house? I'm not really seeing what electrical lines you're referring to, in front of six or seven.
I believe they're in your exhibits in the report that was submitted in, there's, I don't know that I should be making too many comments, but I guess, is that a question? Do it, shall I?
Yeah, I think the general reference was just to the complaints, to the proximity of the trees, to the, to the, to the power lines, but I can, I could provide some clarification for the council in terms of what was done leading up to tonight's hearing.
Please.
With respect to my office's involvement. In the beginning, we had been receiving complaints from, I believe, both, or the city has received complaints from both property owners, the hotel and at 220 with respect to the overhanging of the trees. My office became involved, however, because I'm not an arborist and we did not have an arborist on staff, what we recommended in working with Mr. Hudson's property managers is we recommended that they hire licensed tree experts to conduct an analysis and abate the, the conditions accordingly to reduce any risks that may be, that may be determined by those experts. The trees were trimmed during the course of those discussions. We also made recommendations as to licensed tree contractors to conduct an analysis. My understanding is that the people used to trim the trees were not licensed tree experts, did not conduct an analysis, and so even though they were trimmed, there were still growing concerns that there were some issues dealing with the trees. At that point, prior to submitting, noticing this hearing, we decided we would conduct our due diligence and obtain the services of an arborist to conduct an analysis of not just these trees, but multiple eucalyptus trees in the city that we had concerns with. One of them was set for, another property was set for today after this hearing, and there were some other recommendations as to the others. Some trees were on public property, which is why Mr. Jache was involved. But only at that point, after we received the report, reviewed the potential risks, did code enforcement decide with the assistance of my office to notice this hearing and require removal. And it was because that expert wasn't hired by Mr. Hudson, who we requested from the beginning. Additionally, no tree experts, no tree, licensed tree contractors, despite our multiple recommendations, were utilized by him. So, that's why we're here in terms of tonight is concerned, and that's why there may be some confusion. There was trimming, this was a very long process, but we tried very hard to work with Mr. Hudson and his two property managers, the city did as well, in order to prevent, you know, a hearing such as this, but unfortunately, here we are.
So, the city did, I mean, we, we reached out, said there's a nuisance, trimmed the trees, he trimmed the trees, now we're coming back saying, remove the tree. So, have, and you're saying that we've asked Mr. Hudson to remove the tree?
We have, when noticing, okay, in the beginning, we said, look, we're not experts, they're overhanging, they're overgrown, you need to conduct an analysis and ensure they're safe. You need to hire a licensed tree expert to do this. That wasn't done. When he did trim the trees, we, he still had concerns because of the root failure issues that we know that eucalyptus trees usually have. And so, yes, we conducted that, we conducted that assessment, we noticed this hearing, we actually gave him 30 days to remove the trees, or we'll set this for hearing. Had he come to me and said, can I get a continuance, I'm going to remove the tree, we would have continued it. But I actually spoke to Mr. Hudson subsequently after sending the letter, and he informed me that he was not, that he did not intend to remove them and that he did want to address you here today.
I would like to speak to that, I don't believe that's proper what I said. I said it would be impossible for me to have this hearing if I had to remove them 30 days from the notice, as that was subsequent to the December 7th hearing. And I thought that I would have a chance to actually resolve or hear what the council had to say. I didn't say that I wouldn't remove the trees, but I told you that it would be impossible for me to remove them prior to the hearing. We thought we have a, an acceptable arborist, tree trimming person to do the work. If they were not properly licensed or the proper experts to do the work, then maybe that's our failure and we, you know, could conceivably do that with a different vendor. But we did, we did trim the trees and I thought we did it properly.
Who did you hire, Mr. Hudson?
I would have to go through my records.
It's kind of an important question, given that the accusation is that you haven't had a licensed arborist look at the tree and the significant exposure, I think it's important. If, unless you're just saying to me right now that, no, you did not hire a licensed arborist, then we can certainly move on from it. But if you did hire a licensed arborist and they gave you different information, I think that's valuable to the decision.
I'm not, I'm not clear whether a licensed arborist was hired to trim the trees. I don't, I don't know what their qualifications were when they trimmed the trees.
I'm just going to cut to the chase and ask the question, would you be willing to take the trees down? Are you willing to?
I really would like to try and save the trees, they do provide some shade and I enjoy them. Is there any way in which we could continue to monitor or continue to trim the trees? And if it is determined that there is an imminent threat of failure, then I take them down?
I guess that's the question of the council. I just thought maybe I could get a, we'll take care of it on our own and we can move.
But they're still at risk.
Yeah, there's a risk, yeah.
They're still at risk.
It says, yeah, the most, still at risk. The most likely type of failure would be a root failure because of how they're confined in that rooting space, and that concerns me. Do we look at the integrity of that wall that's holding the tree up and the roots?
You know, whether appropriate or not, can I, can I ask the Romos a couple of questions or not? Is that not appropriate?
If they're willing, if they're willing to ask a question.
Would you be willing to answer a couple of questions to help me out? Okay. And if you could, just because Mr. Hudson...
220 Upper Beacon.
So, from the initial pictures that were taken and then the subsequent pictures, are there still limbs that hang over that created danger to your property?
Yes.
And do you know anything about that wall fix where you see the concrete on, I'm sorry, I don't know the page number right off the top of my head, but...
No, I don't.
Is that wall on your property, that little fix, or is it still on?
Been there since we bought the house in 2000 and that wall was there.
That wall was there prior? Okay, so that's not your guys' fix or you have nothing to do with that?
Hasn't been touched by us.
Okay. That was, that was it, sorry. Thank you.
Was there a request of me to, regarding the removal of the trees for a particular reason? I mean, you heard how I feel about them, but I don't, I'm not sure if there was something else meant there.
I'm only going to speak for myself and say that we do have a licensed arborist who the city paid a lot of good taxpayers' dollars to go out and pay for, and that licensed arborist is telling us that there's an issue with these trees and, you know, I mean, I'm not an arborist, I'm not an expert, I can look at the pictures and say, you know, the trees are a little concerning. I think this is, you know, it's hard for me to go against what a licensed provider of this service tells me, this is our recommendation, I mean, this is why we've paid the money to go out and do it.
I do also want to note...
I'm not clear that they're saying that this is the recommendation to take out the trees. It seems to, you know, read that there is a low risk of danger, and that's part of my point.
Right, and...
Like, excuse me, I'd just like to direct, I don't know if anybody's discussed page eight where it talks about the recommendations as to page two and three where it talks about it as a moderate risk.
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand any of that.
I'm sorry, I'm Ken DePere, I'm on the conference call, and I was just, I'm going through the same materials and I just, I'm looking at, the risk was described as a low risk and I'm reading that it's a moderate risk. I'm not sure if everybody, if I have the same document that everybody else has, but I'm looking at page eight.
Okay, but, but refer that, what you're talking about, the recommendations on tree two and three, okay? If the moderate risk level being presented to buildings is beyond the level of risk tolerance, remove trees, okay? Moderate risk. But then if you look at tree number two, the likelihood of impacting a target is high for a building and significant, severe to a person and significant to a building. To me, that constitutes more than moderate? Am I reading this the wrong way?
Impacting a target is low for persons.
I believe what the, I believe what the description is, is there's a moderate risk of root failure within the next one to three years. If the roots fail and the tree falls over, at that point, the, the impact would be severe to a person and significant to a building, if that occurs.
I see, thank you for that clarification.
Additionally, I'd also like to note in the middle of the page in bold, the arborist opines that he does not see any practical way to reduce the moderate risk to low. So, at the end of the day here, we're not just talking about continuing to trim trees, he doesn't have any recommendations to reduce the risk, and that's what we live with forever, as long as they exist.
I have a question. So, let's say we said, okay, we can keep the trees in and we'll evaluate them every year, and there's a, and there's the accident that happens in year two. What liabilities does the city have if we, if we've said, don't remove these trees?
You mean like the accident that occurred on the road to Mount Ada when a branch killed a person, a eucalyptus tree? Is that what you're saying, what would be if we were aware?
Except, except, that didn't go to us to say that tree should be, no, it wasn't. So, I guess is there, do we have liability if we've done that?
Ken, that's a question for you.
Yes, I know, well, ultimately, it will be a judge or jury that decides whether the city made an improper ruling, but you're still involved in the lawsuit and the expense, and it's a matter of, I mean, there's a certain risk to every, every endeavor, but I think it's, you might want to think in terms of what risk the city is comfortable in making, both from an ethical and moral point of view as well as a legal point of view. You have the evidence in front of you and ultimately... You have the evidence in front of you, and ultimately, you're going to decide whether or not this is a risk, if this is a dangerous tree, significantly dangerous, or enough to justify ordering that the risk be eliminated by abating the nuisance, if you find it's a nuisance.
I have nothing further. I think we've beat a dead horse a bit tonight, but ultimately, my recommendation is to urge the council to vote to find that a public nuisance exists on the subject property at 214 Beacon Street, and order abatement within a reasonable time period, or else the, or otherwise require abatement by the city.
I have one other question. When you say to remove the tree, do people just have to cut it down at the bottom, or do they have to remove it? Because sometimes those suckers grow back. I mean, what does removal mean?
I would recommend that it be required that Mr. Hudson hire a licensed tree contractor to make that determination of what's appropriate, how it's, how appropriate, and what, by what means to remove the tree. Because I don't think anyone has the answer to that question, but I think that could be made as part of the order.
And do you have a recommendation on what is considered a reasonable amount of time?
I believe a reasonable amount of time would be 14 to 21 days, in this particular case. And just for reference, I noticed another property 30 days ago, and they're halfway done cutting their trees down. So it's not, it's a little bit of a burden, obviously, getting people to the island, but not, not too much of a burden. And Indy's been on notice for quite a while.
Did you happen to have that tree vendor information?
Yes, we do.
So then, my next sort of recommendation, if you will, because we are all good stewards in our community, is if the conservancy, the island company, or the city knows that they have a contractor coming over anytime soon, if they could help by suggesting that information, because as we know, the most expensive part of bringing somebody such as a licensed arborist, which we don't have on the island, to the island with all of their equipment and tree trimming, is pretty extensive. So in helping Mr. Hudson, if it's the choice of the council to request that he remove the trees, could we get a little community support, and if there is someone coming to give that information?
Council member Cassidy, as we have done in the past, we would be happy, more than happy, should we know, or learn, or find out that there are tree removal services going on, we would be more than happy to do that.
I think Ms. Wynder can talk to the fact that the, there was some removal, of partial removal, and then the rains came, and they stopped, and they'll be back shortly.
That will be, yeah, for the next, for the next item. We, their, and the property owner had undertaken the services of a company that has been coming to the island, had, I think they started taking their tree down a couple weeks ago, but due to the rain, they had to stop. So there's somebody working on the island in the next couple weeks, in order for, to remove that. So I'm happy to connect, to connect those two people, and coordinate, if that's what Mr. Hudson would like to do.
So the next step here... Sorry?
I said I would appreciate that. I'm looking at picture number two, photo three of tree two, and to the left of that is another tree that hasn't been talked about in this discussion, and I presume that the arborist looked at it and opined that it was fine. Do you see the tree that I'm referring to in photo number three, page 12?
Yes, that little, that skinny thing with the green on top?
Skinny thing, but I don't know what it is.
I don't either. I see, closest to the white fence, correct?
Uh-huh, it has that very pretty red, red bloom thing up on its crown.
Yeah, I don't know what it is either. So what's your question again? We were trying to visit. Trying to find it on the picture.
Um, it's photo three on page 12 with the report in appendix A, and I'm just making sure that we're not talking about removing that tree as well, or any, other than the lemon-scented gums.
There was no mention in the report that I saw.
Correct, it's the two lemon-scented gums that are at issue tonight.
So what do you, where do we go from here? Do you need a recommendation, or do we make a motion, or does this go to public comment? Where do we go from here?
At this point, if there are any closing arguments to be made, they would be made now, and then it would be up to the council to make a decision as to whether there is, in fact, a nuisance condition, and you make your appropriate order.
I don't have any further closing, closing comments. I'll submit on the evidence.
My, my closing comment is, I would appreciate help finding a suitable vendor to remove the tree. I would appreciate a little bit longer time than was described previously. And, you know, my feeling is that I'd like to keep the tree, but I don't see it going that way.
Only two of us have spoken, sir, so, there's four of us up here, but I appreciate that. I would just like to say, because I was thinking the same thing, and I don't mean to disagree with council, but because of the weather that we're having, I wouldn't mind extending that time to something that might work, especially since he lives on the mainland.
A reasonable amount of time is completely up to you.
And I don't want to make it too long, because it is raining a lot, and the wind is blowing, and trees have been coming down all over the place.
Yeah, they have, yes. That is one...
Well, that's, that's true, too.
Are you comfortable with 30 days?
30 days?
Forty-five?
No, thirty.
Thirty days, you're comfortable with?
More comfortable with 30 than 45.
Okay. So, would you like a motion?
Yeah, declare to public, yeah.
There has to be a finding that there's a public nuisance, and a requirement that the public nuisance be abated within 30, in the form of removal of the trees within 30 days. So do we, do I, and do I make a motion to, okay, so I will make a motion to find the eucalyptus trees at 214 Beacon, a public nuisance, and provide the direction, these are the sugar gum trees, lemon gum trees, provide the direction that both trees be removed within a 30-day period.
I'm sorry, I need to point something out, that the tree that I'm looking at may well be on 220's property. The wall where it's growing may not be the boundary line, I'm not entirely sure of that. What happens if that tree is growing on 220's property?
Well, would the owner of 220 object to you removing that tree?
Well, maybe the owner of 220 should remove that tree.
Do we, how do we know for a fact what the property delineation is, and where the tree is? Who's determined that that tree is on 220?
214, you've heard testimony from two city officials today that testified that both trees are on 214 Beacon Street.
So city officials have already pulled records and determined that those are on 220's property?
214.
I'm sorry, 214's property, excuse me.
Is that on your property, Paul?
Paul Romo again, 220 Beacon, which, I don't know which ones we're talking about, the same two trees?
The picture with the wall on it?
Well, they said it was on their property. Every time I tried to trim that stuff, somebody always got mad at us for trying to trim the bolognese, or because it's hanging on our side, so everything on, on the wall, above the wall, is 214.
It's 214, okay.
I could never do any yard work there, because they were going to complain about me trying to do something.
Well, I'm not sure that that would be indicative of the actual property line, if there, is there some way for me to have a little time to investigate where the actual property line is?
Isn't it a matter of like minutes that we can pull this property line from our system?
The GIS.
The GIS?
Might, yeah, I don't have a survey, but there might be a more accurate system to take a, take a look.
I would say, Mr. Hudson, if you wanted to hire out for a survey, and have the lines delineated, I would say that that would be appropriate, but I don't think the, that's the city's responsibility, is it?
You've heard testimony today that the two, the two trees were located on the property at this very last minute, all of a sudden, Mr. Hudson says it's not on his property. I, I'll object to introduction of that evidence, it's not evidence. Additionally, I will represent to you, to what it's, for what it's worth, is that prior to noticing this final notice, we had noticed these proceedings to two different properties. I did confirm with code enforcement, they did look, go back and look, and confirm that the property address, that the trees were at the property addresses that are the subject of tonight's proceedings. And the reason why I did that was because, as you know, the arborist report notes the different property, notes different addresses. So what I did was, I had asked code enforcement to confirm that they were located within 214, on the 214 Beacon Street address, as well as the 197 Upper Terrace, which is the subject of the next agenda item.
I am not clear on where the property line is on that wall, and I'm just saying, after looking at it, that it may well be that it's either on the line, or on 220, I just don't know. I don't, I don't mean to introduce anything late in the stage, but, you know, that is a relevant fact.
I would add that if the council finds there is a nuisance situation, and the property owner does not abate the violation, then it will be up to the city to do that, and then the cost of that will simply be charged against the property owner. So if he chooses not to do so, in his belief that the property, the trees are not on his property, the city still has its remedy.
I understand, but I didn't, I didn't say that I wasn't going to choose not to do so, and I understand you have the right to abate it yourself. I said I would like to investigate where the actual property line is.
I would have thought that you would have done that before you paid to have the tree trimmed in the first place. I mean, you've taken the responsibility of the tree already by having a, somebody come.
Requiring me to trim the trees, so we tried to trim the trees. I am not clear where the actual property line is. It's a, it's a fairly old house development, I'm not sure where I would find the information to determine where the exact property line is. And I'd like a little time to determine whether it is in fact on my property.
I believe the motion that Ms. Cassidy was going to make had the 30-day timeframe built into it.
It did.
So I believe you have like 30 days to find out if it's on your property or not, and have it abated.
Okay, so if there's no further comment, shall, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second, further comment? Call for the vote.
Four ayes, one abstention, Councilmember Sampson.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, I have one more question, any certified licensed survey civil engineers on the island that you might be able to recommend?
We, we'll, we'll provide, we'll provide that information.
Public Works, hey, to help you out with that.
Okay, all right. The determination was made by plot maps from Public Works, is that how the original determination of property line was made?
No, I don't think so.
I'm just wondering if there's any maps that I could look at in the meantime.
Amanda, do we have any maps that would, could help that out?
Well, we'll, we'll provide whatever he needs, and I don't know that those maps are needed, we don't have them tonight.
I can certainly look in the files and see if we have any surveys or property line information, but I can't, off the top of my head, tell you what's available.
Of course, any, anytime, I'd appreciate that, within, within the 30 days. I mean, I'd like to do it as quickly as possible.
Okay. Good night, Mr. Hudson.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Good night, thank you.
Next matter?
Item two. General business, number two?
Yes, yes.
Oh, we have to do it again.
This one will be quicker.
This one's already started, right?
I thought that one was going to be quick.
I think this one's already been started.
Yes.
Thank you, Miguel.
Is this overtime?
Good evening, the next matter is with, is a nuisance abatement matter at 197 Upper Terrace. We had preliminary noted, preliminarily noticed this hearing for tonight, however, we received a report last weekend that was confirmed by code enforcement, that it's a similar case. One of the, this includes a eucalyptus tree on a, on a property that's also in the arborist report that was previously considered by the council. That tree is, I'm, it's reported that that tree is already halfway down. It was supposed to have been completed over the weekend, but due to the rain, they couldn't complete the work. We've agreed to an extension to, to remove the tree. We're informed it should be done by this week. I would recommend that the council continue the hearing on this matter to next month. If the tree's removed by then, then we could take the matter off calendar. If it isn't, we could discuss the matter at that time.
So you're saying the first meeting in March?
Correct, that would be my recommendation.
All right. I can go with that, okay.
Right. I will make a motion to carry over agenda item number two, the declaration of a nuisance and nuisance abatement at 197 Upper Terrace, until the first meeting of March 2017.
Is there a second?
Second.
If no further comments, call for the vote.
All ayes.
Thank you very much. That was very good job that you did.
Except you're going to miss your boat.
I know, well...
She can make it in 15 minutes?
She's got one minute.
Who can run her to the boat?
It's fine, I'm fine here, I have plans for here tonight.
Oh, okay. I thought it was 7:45 boat.
I need a drink.
A lot of guys raising their hand out there.
Okay. City managers report.
Mayor and council, if you would, just for a moment, bear with me, there are a few things to report to you. First, in terms of training, all employees of the city have been asked for suggestions on training that will help them do their jobs better, more efficiently, prove their skills, get certifications that are needed. They are also told in the, in the report, and I will be meeting with a large group this Thursday, that they are to work safely, that they are not to use equipment, that they are not trained for, certified, and if equipment is faulty, they are not to use it. I did receive also a message from the CEO, the Chief Executive Officer of Metro Transit, Mr. Washington, who has graciously agreed to meet to discuss Pebley Road, Pebley Beach, Pebley Road, Pebley Beach Road, and additional funding for transportation purposes. That meeting will take place next week. Very, very gracious, and very responsive. There is a reminder that tomorrow morning, there will be a vehicle study session Wednesday, tomorrow, 8 to 10 a.m. in the morning, it'll be no action, but there will be a study session. There is also tomorrow, from 4 p.m. to 6 p.m., a workshop, or a, a community meeting, put on by our consultants, not a council meeting, to discuss affordable housing options. The city did receive a letter... The city did receive a letter from Sheriff McDonnell, and the undersheriff spoke with me today about his and their desire to work with the council in terms of the process for gaining a new commander to the city of Avalon. They're very interested. They expressed strong support and gratitude for the council's interest. There was a formal request sent this week to Southern California Edison under the Public Records Act for specific information on desalinization production of fresh water at the SCE plant in accordance with an agreement that you have with Edison and that LA County through the city has. This is a follow-up to attempts by the city attorney to obtain that information. Edison was told in advance that this was coming. Assemblyman O'Donnell, Patrick O'Donnell, I met with him at your direction recently. His staff said that they would engage Southern California Edison at its highest levels. I was told that on February 6th, the assemblymen spoke with the president of Edison International and asked for an update and expressed the concerns that the city council has for information that you have not received. That was, excuse me, Assemblymember O'Donnell's staff. Senator Allen's staff has asked us to review, you have been requesting for months to find out what Edison is proposing to do to address capital needs for storage and new well production. You last meeting mentioned that, or you supported an application for monitoring from the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. We learned today from Senator Allen's office that Southern California Edison has applied for a grant under the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation for $1,008 for some storage tanks of which we know nothing about. They were asked to submit a support letter. They are holding that support letter until they hear from the city, and we've had time to evaluate what they're proposing. On Vons, we requested an update and timeline for the Vons to meet the city conditions and for construction. We learned that a meeting of the parties, that is Vons, CISA, will take place, or there will be a conversation this week, and the planning director will be participating in that conversation. The RFP for the Casino Dock Restaurant, not Rock Restaurant, the Casino Dock Restaurant should be going out next week. I will provide all of you in advance of that circulation with the documents, so you can review and make sure that it is consistent with what previous direction has been. And I thank you for indulging me.
Thank you. And city attorney report.
Nothing tonight.
Well, I'm going to correct you on that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I forgot. So I have been in contact with several public agencies about the cars that were damaged by the water at the parking lot at the bank building. We first contacted the city of Long Beach. They indicated that, they went through their records and their storm records and their storm drain records and indicated that that property is a private property and the storm system is a private system, not connected to the city. They said that it does enter into, that exits into the county system. I've contacted the county. They are, they have indicated preliminarily that they didn't have any reports of baggage or stoppage at that location, but they're looking further, wanting to determine that and to determine whether they actually own that property that it drains into, that the private drain drains into. So at this point, we've made outreach to the governmental entities involved. They are reporting that, at least preliminarily, that it's not their property nor is that their drainage system that was their problem, which would be that the problem was the owner of the lot. And so I know the mayor is working with the company that manages that to get that information to our citizens whose cars were damaged. And again, if I get any update from either the county or the city, I will present that information.
Thank you very much. Okay, councilmember report. Who would like to begin?
I'll go last, please.
Okay.
Hold on one second. I have a thought in my head. I'm just making sure I say it the right way.
Well, I will report.
Please.
Since the last meeting, I attended the New York California Revenue and Taxation Committee meeting and a Community Services Committee meeting. We're still looking for new revenue streams for cities because the traditional sales tax is being replaced by services, and so we're trying to find a way to backfill those funds. And Community Services is just really concerned with housing. Of course, I think everybody on the mainland is concerned with housing, and we're concerned with housing. So we're going forward. The first meeting has basically set the agenda, and the next meeting will be in March, which will flesh out the agenda. We'll also take positions on legislation that's proposed at Sacramento. I will report back on that. Also, stopped by, I visited Senator Allen's office and Pat O'Donnell's office and brought some saltwater taffy to him, so they remember us.
Right. That's cool.
Wait.
You have one other thing?
I do. Well, I'm noticing we're having some more encroachments around town with sandwich boards and such, so I would like the direct, the code enforcement to gently remind the businesses that they're not to put stuff on city streets and sidewalks without prior permission.
If I may follow up on that, one of the reasons why also Ms. Winder was here today is about a year and a half ago, the council adopted an administrative citation procedure in its municipal code where rather than if people violate the code, rather than go to criminal court, you go to civil court, and we have civil fines. And so she was here today with staff, doing the training of staff, so that these kind of minor violations of the code can be prosecuted as civil offenses rather than criminal offenses, which we believe will, one, be more efficient to get people to comply, would result in fines that we can collect directly. We don't have to go through the court system, so it should pay for itself.
And is this in line with law enforcement's participation?
You can go ahead.
Yes, they were also involved. Harbor Master was there, Sheriff's Department was there. What we're doing right now is all departments are analyzing the different types of violations and how to best, how to best address them, whether that's to infract or file a misdemeanor in criminal court, do the administrative citations. I know we also have the parking violation. So each respective departments were trained on the admin sites, and they will be determining on a departmental basis which types of violations they want to prosecute and how, and which they want to cite, utilize administrative citation for. So in the next few months, I believe we should probably have a big spreadsheet of all the types of violations and how we plan on attacking those on a code enforcement level.
Mayor, may I just comment that I think our first approach with this work, this fine work done in identifying those, the first work is to make sure that we've educated the public, our public, on what they should do and shouldn't do, encourage them, urge them to do the right thing. If all of that fails, then of course we can resort to the procedures that have been discussed.
So that includes big planners on the sidewalk and all that kind of stuff, right?
Yes, sir.
Like down Front Street or wherever else you may encroach without permission.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
You want me to go?
Please, councilwoman.
Okay, so I have a lot, sorry. I attended the Gateway Cities Council of Government meeting. Unfortunately, I had the experience of Los Angeles traffic, and I was late, so I sincerely apologize. But now I know how difficult it is to be in LA traffic at 4:00 in the afternoon. So I'm much more attentive to what we're doing when we talk about transportation as well, so I feel their pain over town. It's been an incredibly busy week, lots of questions, lots of community discussions, and I'm sure that's been the case for a lot of our council. There were so many questions this week and just side conversations and this and that that, you know, it's too much to say in one council meeting. So for those of you that have asked me specific questions, I apologize if I've not hit each of those topics tonight. One, I have mentioned this privately, but I'd like to mention it publicly, the Whitley property that the city owns and housing, it is a low-income housing property, and it may not be appropriate to discuss the reasoning in which the housing is occurring the way it is at that property, but it is something that I believe the council needs to hear on why we're housing the way we are when that is a low-income property. So if I could just ask that request, however, it is appropriate to answer that question to the council if we could get that information, and at least that we could respond to those members in the community that are wondering why, when we don't have low-income housing, we're housing that way. Financials and legal fees, I know Councilmember Olson is asking on a regular basis. We're seeing community requests for financials. I did hear from Finance Director today that they should in the next week or so have updated financials, but I think Councilmember Olson and I have both been asking about the monthly reports, the budget versus actual, the, you know, P&Ls, where are we? And so if we could take that request a little more seriously, and that goes along with legal fees as well, we've not received updated legal fees as a council since, I verified today, the last update was October.
May I comment on that? The city attorney has now provided and is providing on a monthly basis the aggregation of legal costs on a year-to-date basis, and so if you're not getting that information, then we will see that you are, and we apologize for that, and all of you will get that information, but he has been doing that for some time, his office. It's easier for them to do it than us to do it. And then in addition, of course, there's explanations behind the spreadsheet, so I apologize if that...
That's great. I know that BB&amp;K and, you know, fairness to BB&amp;K, I know that information has been transmitted to the city. It has not, and it has been transmitted timely from BB&amp;K. It has not come to the council. So wherever it's hung up in the city, if we could unhang it and send it on through, that would be great because there's lots of questions that come from the community regarding our legal fees. We've been hearing this for several years. So however we can make that a little easier on us, that'd be grand.
I will tell you that our fees are about half of what they were three years ago. Each month.
Half of two mil is only a mill, right?
No, stop it.
Yeah. It's still, I mean, we're the five that are really being asked questions of the community, and so I firmly believe in being armed with as much information and education so that when somebody hypothetically may say, well, your legal fees have increased, and I can go back to my little spreadsheets and say, actually, no, you're wrong. Our fees have decreased. So that's the basis for our, you know, information, and plus it's public information. So the next item Audrey touched on today, which was the Garibaldi update. So I would just say, for those that have asked about the schedule, the timing, what's happening with the Garibaldi, reach out to the city for specifics. If we could get a one-page overview that we can splash around and let the community know, based on Audrey's report tonight, any public outreach that we can do with that. I know several of us have a Facebook account. We can help add that, get it in the paper, at least so the community knows what's going on with the Garibaldi. Not everybody does watch our meetings. I don't know why, but. Succession plan for our, the unfortunate departure of our capital improvements director and Public Works Director's position? Do we, there is a lot of projects going on in the community, and so there, do we have any sort of succession plan, or are we, what do we, how do we direct the community?
Of course we do. We have a director that has been, we're doing background on a director of Public Works who has a full experience, not only as a city engineer, but also in CIP projects. However, that alone will not address the issue of capital improvement. Historically, the Public Works Department has been underfunded and understaffed. Historically, this goes back 30-some years. And we're looking not only at, we're very sad to see Mr. DeJake go because he has been exceptional, but we're also looking at supervision in the maintenance facility, either looking internally to, because a director doing what directors do, they also need supervisors in the field. And in terms of construction management, we've made numerous contacts with parties, both LA County, with temporary firms. We have an engineering firm that you've contracted, city contracts with, looking at doing construction management. So, and Mr. DeJake, to his credit, he will be sorely missed. He has also agreed to assist where he can with us in that implementation of that process. So nothing will be dropped. Nothing is going to fall, though we will miss, and we've asked for his personal email and his personal phone number, so we can call him in the event that we need him.
Okay. The next item was, and I may have missed it in Jeff Lawrence's update, but the update from Edison on their report and analysis from their consulting firm, are we going to see that on the next council agenda? Do we know?
That is the issue, and you, thank you, councilmember, that is the issue. You were promised to report in December. There has been literally no, I know in previous meetings you said be frank about this, and so I am. There has literally been no communication with them on what they propose to do, yet tonight, as we learned today, they're making grant applications for facilities that we're unaware of, that they are arguing will serve the sustainability needs of the city. SCE corporate management needs to be more transparent. They are not transparent. They are not sharing information with the city. And we hope that that will change. I don't blame Jeff. I don't blame Adelant. But management of that company needs to focus on addressing the concerns that the city council has, and I hope I'm, that was frank enough. I'm just trying to be as honest with you as possible. We would, I will ask again for that report that you were promised in December, that they're telling you won't get to March on the capital side. And we also are going to find out about this grant that we knew nothing about, that they've applied for, and asked Senator Allen's office for a letter of support without asking us. Or that is you. I don't mean me, but you, so.
Ole touched on it just a little bit about encroachments, and there's been obviously a lot of construction, and so I'm not sure, this question may be for planning, but the library project and the conservancy project, I'm just assuming that those have encroachment permits? Obstruction permits? Okay. So the conservancy one, I know that the groundwork that needs to be done is significant, and I understand all that, but it's, you know, it's a significant impact to that corner. And I just happen to drive that corner several times a day, so I do see it, and I'm hoping that that project will move along a little quicker.
The rain didn't help that one at all.
The rain does not help, no, and it's unfortunate to them because it's, you know, it is what it is. They've done a great job of containment, no issues there. I just, it's hard, especially on a cruise ship day. You can, most of the time, you can't get from Lower Terrace out, you know, and they do the best they can. Everybody does. I understand that. I'm just hoping that, you know, the question specifically to me was, do they have an encroachment? Is it an obstruction permit? And I didn't know how to answer that, so.
They do, both of those projects have obstruction permits to use portions of the street. The Trailhead project unfortunately had a lot of utilities in the street that they had to replace and move around, so there was a lot more impact to the street itself, and I don't even know if they're done with all of that work yet. The library project, they were allowed to use part of the street. I would ask the favor, when you traverse that corner, if you see something that is a significant issue, let me know, and we may need to revise their permit.
That's supposed to be posted publicly, right? I mean, in the open where people could see it.
They should have a copy of the permit posted somewhere on the property. And I can ask...
Might alleviate some of the questions.
Yeah, yeah.
I can have the guys, Miguel or Christian, go down there and confirm that it's actually posted.
It'd be nice to have it posted, so people could go by and actually see it.
There's a significant amount of golf cart traffic that comes in and out of that little location, and, you know, there's, it just is the nature of the beast with a cruise ship. And, you know, it just is the nature of the beast with a cruise ship, and the visitors coming and walking all over the street there, that it's just that. Okay, so then my last, I promise, my last item is really more of a personal question. If, I don't know if we, the city, has any involvement in the library project, the construction project that's going there?
Not really.
No? Okay.
Denise, I'm not aware of the-
Even financially?
The only thing that, how we are involved, Cindy, is the county, when Supervisor Knobby was in office, we were requested to be the liaison between the Friends of the Library and SCI. And George Monroe has been that liaison, and we were asked to be in the middle.
I'm just curious to know when that project is going to finish?
I haven't seen a recent email come in with an update, but we could certainly find out and send you an email to the council.
It was supposed to finish by the end of December, but of course.
The rains and whatnot, yeah. And, you know, I see it about 16 times a day, I'm there. And so I would say at least no less than two to three times a day, I'm stopped and asked questions. So that's the basis for that one, is more of a personal question. But, you know, how do I get to the sheriff's office? How do I get to the library? In the beginning, that was a little more difficult to answer. Now we kind of have our, you know, sound bites, but it has gone on for some time, so I'm just curious to know, I'm curious to see what it's going to be.
Yeah, there was a gentleman from the county that was there just this last week, and he just said, "Yeah, we've been told we..." He was here to kind of hustle the other guy along, but with all the rain delays and...
Okay, that's it for me.
Ole, you made her noise.
I already did. No, I already did mine.
Oh, but you, I thought you-
I'm good. I said, "Cool."
Yes. I wanted to ask some questions. Who are we hiring our new Public Works Director?
Sorry?
Who will be hiring our new Public Works Director?
The city manager.
City manager, Will?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you.
An offer has been tendered. The background, it has been accepted tentatively. The background is underway, which we consider probably the most important part.
To the next director that's-
Yes, sir.
So he's in the process of being hired?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, the references are being checked this week.
Okay. You wrote a letter to the Sheriff McDonald about our new captain?
Yes, I had some help, yes.
That's going to be selected, and I think it's, I think it was a good letter, and I got, I got the reply from Jim McDonald's office. And I think that we're getting somewhere with it, and I think it's really important that the city council, although we don't choose that person, it's really important that the sheriff in this community comes on board with the way things are, because there was a lot of abuse going on in this town, and there was big problems with the sheriffs. And we don't need sheriffs that are real hardcore here, except for things like, we need to oversee and make sure that we're protected from like terrorist attacks and armed assailants, things like that, I'm really concerned about. But with the way the sheriffs has blended into the community, they help kids out. They've started kids' programs. They help them with homework. They partner with them. They show up at the teen center. We've come a long ways. This is the best administration sheriffs that we've had in 50 years, in the 50 years that I've been here. And I don't want to see that lost. I don't want to, so I appreciate that letter that you sent on behalf of the city council and the people of Avalon.
And I would like to thank the mayor and Councilmember Cassidy for their involvement in editing and so on of the letter. But to mention that the undersheriff, Mr. Denham, at the request of the sheriff, was very clear today that he, that they value Avalon, that they are very much interested in making sure with you that whoever is selected is someone that will fit in and work well with the community. And that was made very clear.
Absolutely. I like every sheriff that's in town, because one bad apple does spoil a whole bunch sometimes. I mean, we don't want, we don't want, we want to be protected, and we want our kids to grow up respecting police officers. It wasn't that way when I was young, because they didn't respect us. We were on the receiving end of some of the sheriffs that were abusive, and I've seen it go on, and I didn't like it. It was one of the reasons I ran for council, because I wanted to be able to do something about that and see it through. So I'm glad that the Sheriff's Department is working with us, and we're educating children to grow up, to be better citizens, and to respect law enforcement, and to partner with them, because we used to avoid cops. My dad would used to tell us, "You don't go into the sheriff's station, ever. They're not your friends." Now, my son is friends with the sheriffs. They were at the teen center the other night. They brought their wives. They're helping our kids out. That's what I call community involvement with our sheriff's program. I'm so proud of them. And Jim McDonald had mentioned that that's where respect for sheriffs comes in, is when the kids are young. We're spearheading some projects with sheriffs, that they're bringing in their little interns and the kids, they're teaching them how to fix bikes and things, and I'm really excited about this, moving forward. So you also, on the next note, you wrote a letter to, was it Vons?
We've had various communication with Vons in this last week, yes.
Okay, great. Well, I talked to Jenna Wilkinson, she's like public affairs official today, and then I left her a message afterwards, because she's going to have, I was told she's going to have a meeting with Amanda Cook?
She's going to be speaking with, excuse me, sir, with the CISA people. Ms. Cook has been asked to invite it.
Are you sure? Can you tell me that for sure and confirm that? Because they don't know that. That's part of the problem I have with what's going on with Vons.
My understanding is there is a conference call scheduled tomorrow afternoon between Vons, Jenna, with Vons and the CISA group, and they've invited me to participate in the conference.
Okay, none of them know about it. See, that's a lie.
And I think part, the impression that I'm getting is that the CISA group is kind of a loose group of homeowners, and perhaps the communication between that group has not been as clear as it could have been.
There's a group of people that live in that neighborhood, and they call them a group of people, but they're individual people, and each of them has a different kind of a house. And each of them are going to take different types of windows. We're not moving forward because Vons is being evasive, very vague. They don't want to put those windows in those houses. That was the deal we made. It's not the CISA people that are holding up the project, it's Vons that's holding them up. They don't want to pay for those windows. And it's kind of, it's crawling up my back right now, because I was very clear about that. And they keep putting us off, and they say, "We're going to..." Thank you, Amanda, by the way, I appreciate that. There's a girl named Michelle Black that they say is an attorney, and we can't talk to these people because we're supported by council. So council supports us. That's what Vons tells us. But that's not true. She doesn't legally represent them. They don't reach out to the individual homeowners. They don't want to put those windows in there, and that was the deal. That's where we start. Vons is a year and a half behind in this project because, just because they're dragging their feet.
Councilmember, we have asked for a status, an update on the window mitigation, noise mitigation measure for the windows. We have asked for their estimate of time when they will complete their conditions prior to construction, what their construction schedule is, when they initiate, when do they see they will initiate, and when will they finish. I'm also told in regard to today by one of the people who is in the neighborhood, that they have not heard, up until what I thought was that they'd heard, was since October 26th, I believe, that they hadn't heard back from Vons. So maybe this is a re-engagement, that's what we can hope for.
Well, they met with Vons, and there was no representatives from the city council there. That's a bad thing. They manhandled those people. They pushed them around and they bullied them. They said, "You don't get windows, you get window. You can be upstairs or downstairs." I didn't say that. I said, "They need windows, plural. All those houses need windows all the way around there." I didn't say, "According to your study." I said, "Period." That was the deal we made. They're reneging on this, they're pulling out of it, they're having a meeting tomorrow, nobody knows about it. I talked to five members of, I talked to five of those neighbors down there. So the reason I'm so passionate about this is because we made an agreement. It's a business deal. They just bought a lot for $2 million, $2.5 million, and it's going to be a dirt lot if they do not put these windows in. I am standing my ground. There's no way I'm going, this is not what I agreed on. Okay, there's Jenna Wilkinson and Sam Shank, they came, had a meeting with those people. Nobody, none of us were there to represent the community and to help them out. I didn't hear about it.
The condition of approval reads that the city has to receive a copy of an agreement between Vons and CISA. And so the city is relying on Vons and CISA to come to an agreement on window replacement, how many windows, who gets the windows, and the timeline that they're going to accomplish that requirement. But the condition of approval was for an agreement between Vons and CISA, not Vons and each individual homeowner. And I think that's made it more cumbersome.
No, no, that's not what I said. I'm the one that-
But that's what's in the conditions of approval, and that's-
That's not what I said, though.
I know, I know Councilman Sampson, but that's the challenge that staff is having to-
I see.
To make sure that they're doing what they were required to do, because the conditions of approval read an agreement between Vons and CISA. And I think the expectation was that CISA would represent all the involved homeowners. So we're trying to get-
They're not, though.
-it organized and get it accomplished.
They cannot build this property until the windows are done.
You can start it, or they can't build it?
They can't start it.
They can't start it.
They have to have the agreement ready to go, and until that happens, the project is not starting.
Right. The conditions of approval say they have to give us a copy of the agreement to install all the windows.
And if I may, in communication, what I've, in the past, what I've told Vons is, in order to save money and time, and I understand that there are other parties who they bought the property from who've had the same conversation or similar, that if you really want to start this project and get it done in a time-efficient manner, you need to take care of the people who are affected by this, whoever they are, and it may cost you a little more at first, but it'll save you in time because you'll be allowed to proceed it. So they have to satisfy all the people who have concerns about noise from the project under construction and when it's completion. And that's what we've been telling them.
Noise and dust, too. Noise and dust as well. And then there's going to be some weather changes through there because of the height of the buildings. We've got a long ways to go there. And you know what? Maybe we're going nowhere. Maybe that lot's going to stay a dirt lot. I mean, that's what I'm looking at right now. They've got another year to make this happen, and if they keep stalling like this, I'm not, there's no way, I'm going to stand firm on this. I represent the people of Avalon that live around there, and I will fight for them, because I made the agreement. This is going to be a little hard for them, and I wanted to make sure that they were protected some way from noise and pollution and traffic, and I wanted to make sure the store went in properly, so that we work with these people. But if this is the way the job's going to go, that they're already a year and a half behind schedule, I don't know if I made, I know I made the right decision, I'll tell the public why, is because we need a new food source in town. The thing is, if there was a disaster, if we had an earthquake, that store right there would more than likely tumble to the ground. They're not, they haven't fixed it up in, what, 80 years, 60 years or something? We need to prepare for the worst possible thing that could happen so that we, the public is protected. Water and food, that's the most important things that I usually talk about, and food was important. But, and if someone wants to put in a nice new $25 million facility and no cost to the city, except there is a cost to the people that live around there, they feel it's a cost to them. That's why I've said it's, we need to have some compassion for the fact that the store's going up right next to their houses. Some of them are broken-hearted because of it. They don't, they're bummed out about it, okay? And I'm trying to make it okay for them. It'll never be just great. Nobody wants that store next to their house. But it's got to go somewhere, okay? We're not moving in a good direction with Vons right now. Vons, I don't know why these multi-billion dollar companies can't help us out a little bit. They help the oil company out, they spend tens of millions of dollars on the water down at the West End, that's okay. They can spend tens of millions of dollars down there, but they're not doing anything for the people of Avalon? This is where all the rapers live, right here. What is going on there? Is there some kind of corruption here? Fraud? I don't know. I'm not sure, but you know what? It sure smells like it to me. My next thing is, okay, I have a lot of Mexican friends in town, my family's Mexican, they're from Mexico. I want to talk about, there's some really people that are kind of afraid right now because of just a new administration that's in. And I wanted to let people know that I reached out. I don't want the people to be afraid. I want them to be able to come to your city councilman, I support you. I know some people came into this country illegally. Some people live here in this town, they work here, they've been here for 25 years, their kids are growing up here, and now they're afraid. I'm telling you, don't be afraid. You have a representative right here. I will help you guys out any way I can. I'm trying to work with the congressman's office right now in order to possibly work on immigration reform. But in the meantime, there's a representative named Donna Carlos, and she works for Loenthal, but they work for us, they work for you. You can come to me, we can set up a meeting, you can set up a meeting with her. Each case is usually individual, it's how you came into the country, but if you have questions, please come to me. There's no harm's going to be done to you. What we want to do is protect the community, and that's how I'm going to do it, is I'm going to tell you, "Come to me." And I'm sure possibly some of the other councilmen would be involved in hearing from you. I will be happy to be a liaison. We will also be happy, if you have questions, we can invite Donna Carlos here, and a representative from the congressman's office, and you can speak to her personally. We'll provide the city hall for you. What I'm saying is that if past presidential administrations have approved people to come into this country, or they don't kick you out if you've stayed too long, it means they've okayed it. And you know what? I'm not going to say, this is why immigration reform might be a good idea, is because I'm not going to say you should leave. I'm going to protect you, you know what? But at the same time, the border, it needs to be closed off because there's terrorists and there's very violent criminals, and we want to keep those people out. We're a country at war, and we can't have open borders because we're a country at war. And that's the big thing. It has nothing to do with the fact that you're Mexican, or you're Chinese, or you're Russian. But the Mexican, this border here that allows people to come in and out freely, that's not going to affect you if you've been here, I don't think. I will go to bat for you. And like I said, you can come into city hall, you can pick up a card, I will be handing them out, and I don't want people to be afraid. That's the big thing. Another thing, the last thing, is there's been talk of California receding from the Union. I don't think it's a joke. These people are serious about this. I'm not going for it. I have a very, I'm very patriotic, everybody knows it. I'm very concerned about that. We get a lot of grant money from the federal government. I'm going to ask the council to support me in saying that if California recedes from the Union, then Catalina should recede from California. I mean, we could call ourselves some part of another state, but I think we should write our leaders up in Sacramento and let them know, "This is a poor idea." My family fought for this country, they suffered for this country. Some of my family members still are suffering, and people that you know, because they fought for this country. That flag right there, the red, white, and blue one, that's the flag that they fought for. Not the California flag, although I'm proud, I mean, I like living in California. I don't know if I'm, you know, that proud of it, I was born here. But if this is the kind of way that you treat our country, I'm just saying, you do not have my support to recede from the Union. No way. I stand with the people of the United States of America on this one. And I do protect our immigrants as too, as well, the ones that are here. We just want to keep our enemies out. That's what is really important to me right now, so. And I think, oh, there's tomorrow, I don't know, is somebody going to make an announcement on your city manager's reports and stuff, like the meeting, the workforce housing meeting?
Yes, there is.
You did, okay, thank you. Okay, I believe that's all I have to say.
Okay. Well, in line with, I've got a letter-
Well, in line with, uh, I've got a letter that I'm going to give Denise, someone, Barbara Wyland from the community asking about Vons, you've given them an update. I think, you know, there's been some Facebook stuff going on, saying that, you know, I, Vons should tell the city to shove it because we seem to be getting the, getting the flack for why Vons isn't happening. And so, as much as this information is getting out tonight and in the future, I think it's important. Um, so, that's, that's letter will go to Denise. Also, public notice, annual residential vehicle registration. Notice is hereby given that February 8th, the city of Avalon will begin annual registrations for all residential vehicles, blue stickers, and residential golf carts, autoet permits, and will continue through April 3rd. The fee for renewal is $30 for residential autoet and vehicle permits. Registration is at city hall, right here, at 9:00 to 12:00, and 2:30 till 4:30. There'll be a first, there will be the first of a number of study sessions regarding vehicles, again, that's tomorrow, 8, 8 to 10, and we hope to see you here as well. Also, Catalina Island Medical Center and the Friends of the Library are continuing their healthcare series Thursday, March 2nd, at 7:00 PM with Dr. Yulibari, osteoporosis facts, preventative tips, and important information for bone health. So, that will be on March 2nd. Um, and the only other thing is, uh, what is this smirks on your two faces?
Nothing.
Look at you, you're just sitting there going-
My tummy's grumbling.
You two are just going like this and smirking, did you catch that out there in the audience?
Because he's the only one that can hear my tummy grumble, and it's embarrassing.
Okay, it's tummy growls, okay.
It's 8:15.
We need snacks.
We need snacks for council meetings.
So, um, anyway, I'm just kind of happy to announce that, um, it's amazing, you know, something pops up and, and everybody goes, oh my gosh, this is so terrible, what are we going to do and whatever? But, you know, like, the vehicle, the vehicle conversations spurned, um, very happily, the Catalina Yamaha purchased a couple of Scion vehicles that are for sale. And we're very excited about that because they are the four-seaters, they fall within the limits, and, um, I shouldn't be putting a plug for a business, however, they are there if anybody would like to see them. And so, anyway, I think that's great. So, thank you, John and Mike.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's good.
And that's all I have. Um, next, we will have a presentation by the American, what's that?
Do you want to take a break first?
No.
We'll get, no, we'll let you go through, gee, you've been here for an hour now.
That's how long it is.
It's my turn.
Hi, Lisa Lavelle, Relay for Life 2017 Chair for Catalina Island. I just wanted to give you guys some info, and then, uh, hope to be coming before you every couple of weeks to give you an update on programs that are offered through the American Cancer Society that will help our local community. Um, so, Relay for Life is happening Sunday, June 4th. That is from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, it's a 12-hour event again. We're hoping to have a total of at least 20 teams this year, so we'd love it if city wanted to provide a team. I think Dan has actually talked about pulling everyone together for that, so don't be surprised if he comes asking. Um, the American Cancer Society was started 31 years ago by a gentleman named Dr. Gordy Klatt, who was walking on behalf of his friend who was dying of cancer. He was hoping to raise money for cancer research. He walked for 24 hours straight, just him, on a track, and did just over 83 miles, and raised over $27,000, just him. So, since then, the Relay for Life program is now in over 5,500 cities worldwide, and has raised over $5 billion for cancer research. Their goal is to give people more birthdays and to eradicate cancer. So, that's what we're hoping to do. Our community is greatly affected by cancer, some people think it's the thing. I actually think it's, we're pretty close to the standard number of people getting cancer these days, but we just know everybody personally, so it feels like we're much more impacted. Everyone in this room has had someone they know who's either passed, is surviving with, or has fought and beaten cancer. So, hopefully, you guys can come up, um, everyone in the audience do. Um, we have a number of people that are in here that have actually walked on teams previously, um, and it's a little bit easier because it's, it's a 12-hour event. But if you can't walk on a team, if you have to work on a Sunday, we totally get that. Come up and buy food, there's games, it's a fairly fun atmosphere for the majority of the day, and there's ways to fundraise up there while you're there. So, um, this past year, we increased our fundraising goal and, uh, made just under $15,000 for the cancer, for the American Cancer Society. The, um, programs that I want to highlight for you guys today are two programs that are kind of day-to-day helps. One is transportation. A lot of people that are here on the island that have to get to the mainland and then either rent a car or borrow a car if they don't have one, um, don't know that there's a transportation service that the American Cancer Society offers. It's free. They will transport you, um, through a program called Road to Recovery, and it provides free trips for cancer patients to and from cancer-related appointments. The volunteer will drive you to the appointment, wait for you while you get your treatment, and drive you back to the location that you're going to again. It's amazing. So, if you have someone that you know of that is having to spend way too much money on a rental car for cancer treatment, please, I'll give you the phone number in just a moment, they can call, but please call that number, see what the details are, and get signed up to get that service, it's invaluable. Uh, if you want to write it down now, the number is 1-800-227-2345. You can also go to cancer.org and get all the details and sign up there as well. So, whether they use the internet or not, they have access to that. The other one is a lodging program. A lot of people will end up having to go over and stay multiple days on the mainland to get a week's worth of treatment. Um, the American Cancer Society has a location called The Hope Lodge, um, that provides housing for both the cancer patient and a caregiver. They also partner with local hotels across the country to provide free and reduced-rate hotels. So, that same phone number and website will also give you the information for that program as well. Um, but I think those are probably two of the biggest programs that most of the people on this island don't take advantage of. Um, they are trying to get us numbers, um, of people that do use that service. Unfortunately, the numbers are utilized countywide as opposed to citywide, so, um, we won't be able to tell you exactly how many people from Avalon have previously used it and how many are using it now, but we can at least show what you, the county number's impact is. So, again, we hope to see everyone on, uh, Sunday, June 4th, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, um, and we appreciate your support. Does anybody have any questions?
No, that's great, though.
Okay.
And then, American Cancer, those numbers will be in the, you're going to put those in the newspapers, well, I mean, that's, that's-
Yeah, we actually are working already to, um, come up with a plan for newspaper information. We also do have a page on Facebook, so if you haven't liked the page yet, please do. Um, it's Relay for Life Catalina. If you just search us, you'll find us pretty quickly. And then, the last point of interest is we are having an info meeting this Thursday, so day after tomorrow, here in the council chambers at 5:30. Anyone who hasn't done this Relay for Life and wants to just get some info of what it's about, um, what happens at the event, what to expect, we're going to be doing that from 5:30 until 6:00. And then, from 6:00 to 7:30, we'll be discussing, uh, kind of goals, little goal-setting with our teams, and trying to get everybody signed up for that information. So, um, hopefully, we'll see you guys there. We'll be here from 5:30 until about 7:15, probably. Our relay, uh, point of contact has to get back on the 7:30 boat, so.
Excellent.
All right.
Great work.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
So good. Bless you.
Oh, right, it is. Oral communications. Um, this is an opportunity for the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda, no, uh, no action will be taken, and you will be limited to three minutes. Do I see Jim Luttrell? I'm ready to jump up.
Danny, it's your time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, just wanted to make an announcement, we'll have information in the newspaper, uh, later this week. We are hosting our next fixer, and this one's targeting the business community here in Avalon. We'll have two sessions on February 22nd, one at 9:30 AM and one at 5:30 PM, both to be held at the Holiday Inn Canyon Resort, formerly known as the Canyon Hotel. And this will be, um, advising businesses on how they can save energy along the lines of their electricity, either through rebates, um, enhancing the quality of their equipment, or replacing outdated equipment. So, thank you very much.
Now, that's- Speaking of fixer, when's the next mixer?
That will be the evening of the 16th, I believe. My staff is probably shuddering with me trying to do that off the top of my head.
It is the 16th.
Of February, yeah.
It is February 16th.
Is it? Okay.
No, that's-
14.
Oh, my gosh, if you wait until the 16th. Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Mello?
Council members, Dan Mello, 82 Salvista. Um, I was respectfully requesting tonight that, um, you take a look at the Avalon Municipal Code regarding dinghies at the dinghy docks. I, uh, wanted to request that, one, there be a height requirement to the dinghies, and two, there be a, um, weight requirement. Um, I recently ran into a little bit of trouble. I designed a, a boat to the specs of the dinghy dock requirements, and I made it exactly 14 feet, or actually 11, or 13 feet, 11 inches, by the max width, which was seven feet, I made it to six feet, 11 inches. And I made it very high, actually up to the wash decks two inches above the, the surface of the water, and then I wanted it up to my hip, so the, the sides are, are rather high. Um, I spoke with Brian Bray, he rather I not, secured it at the dinghy dock because there was an issue with complaints, and we, I received a few complaints. Brian could tell you exactly what the complaints were, and I believe it was the height and the weight, and there is a windage factor, if, if there's a 10 or 15 knots of wind, it could potentially damage other vessels. But I was going to be on the agenda, um, next council meeting. I believe that you can, how's it work? You can put it to a vote, next council meeting, or is it one council meeting after that?
Can I just, I just want to clarify that I received an email from Mr. Mello yesterday, I believe. I haven't had an opportunity at all to share with the council or the city manager. I did forward it to Brian Bray, but there's no-
Absolutely not. I want to give you a heads up.
I'm not saying that this is on the agenda, if it's something that can be fixed internally, but there has to be some discussion before we even bring it to the city council.
Okay, great.
Just to clarify, it's not on the agenda.
Start the conversation. While you're perusing the waterfront, you can take a look at the dinghies and see how high they actually are, and see how acceptable or unacceptable vessel that size would be. But to the tune of $48,000, I built this boat, and I wanted to tie it up at the dinghy dock. And if I, if that's a mistake on my part, then I just want to make sure that it's, it's not going to happen in the future.
Um, I'm not understanding something. What happened? Is, did, is something wrong with your boat, or?
Well, um, in 2011, I decided to build a boat because I was having issues with my current boat. I wanted a backup boat, I wanted a boat I could go into shallow water with, the fish lobsters, and I wanted a, a boat I could do, go to and from my, my larger vessel with. So, I, um, hired a naval architect, sent him the Avalon Municipal Code. He went through it, and he said, you want to carry this much weight, it has got to be this long and this wide, let's build this boat. So, I sent the plans to the city, and Brian said he did have some concerns with it, but he sent me back the municipal code. So, I went ahead and I built it, I showed up in Avalon with it, and, and we made an agreement where I could tie it up to my larger vessel. Um, of course, without charge because it's, it's not over 14 feet, and there were some other agreements, but I didn't want to push it, and I probably should, but I also want to work with the city and, and cut it down if I can cut it down. And there, there's a large-
Why is it too big?
You know, I understand, but this isn't a conversation we should-
It is, it is too big for the competition. I mean, you have people tying up several rafts, you have people tying up little tiny savits, it'll, it'll decimate, something like that. But I could lighten it up, I could, there's a big heavy shade that's on it, I could cut that off, and it'd, it'd be a little more acceptable, but I'll, I'll submit some pictures and some photos, and you'll agree, it's quite a large vessel.
Okay, that's, we can talk about it, right? I mean, I mean, but I, I want to understand what he's talking, what he, what his point is.
Okay.
That's all?
Okay.
What is your point? Is the boat too big? Is it too heavy?
Apparently, it is, yeah. I mean, hey, Joe, if you, if I could tie it up there, I'm on-
What, what was the problem? Did somebody kick you off the, the dinghy dock?
Yes.
And the boat is less than 14 feet?
Yes.
Because it's too heavy or something?
Because it's too heavy, and it's-
Oh, I see.
There's a lot of what's in the municipal code, I believe, I can't quote this, but I believe it's at the harbor master's discretion.
Okay.
It's not specifically, and I didn't read anything about that in the dinghy, um, section, or the dinghy dock section, but I think there's something that covers all of the harbor, harbor master's discretion, safety, whatnot.
Nothing about the weight.
Nothing about the weight, nothing about the height, but, you know, those, those are two issues that, uh-
If it's destroying other people's property, I think that's, that's, that's cool that you put it out on your boat in that case, and I, I think this, if this, if it's destroying other boats, you know who's getting responsible for it.
There's boats there that are destroying other boats right now, but-
The dinghy docks destroys my boat when, when there's a big swell, so I mean, every year, I pull it out and there's a big hole in the side of it, I mean, that's just-
I mean, I would love to have a Anything Goes Dinghy Dock, and all the big boats can go there, or one ends big boats, the other end, small boats. There's a solution to every problem, so you just got to find it.
Great.
Wow, okay.
Thank you for bringing that forward, I'm sure the staff will be-
Something to think about for the next two weeks, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for my, for your time.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for coming. Okay, any other oral communications? Okay, consent calendar.
Mayor and Council, uh, you have on the consent cali- calendar, item number three is to approve the actions from, it'd be the minutes, actually, from the January 17, 2017 regular city council, and the January 25th, 2017 special city council meeting. Item number four is a recommendation to, the title is to adopt an ordinance for cruise ship wharfage fee increase. The recommendation is to adopt an ordinance to modify the cruise ship wharfage fee using 100% of the passenger manifests beginning March 2017, and to increase cruise ship wharfage fees by 50 cents per passenger each fiscal year for the next five years. Item number five is to adopt of, adopt an ordinance regarding autoet permits in the city and replacement of oversized vehicles. Um, the recommended action is to adopt an ordinance amending Section 4-4, 1705.1, and deleting subsection E of Section 4-4, 1704 of the Avalon Municipal Code concerning the replacement of permits for vehicle, um, autoets. This is the second reading and adoption. Uh, the item number six is, uh, non-represented management employee compensation. Um, the recommendation is to adopt a resolution establishing compensation for non-management employees, and I should note in that report that actually the cost that you have in your report is, uh, is, should, the cost of the two-year is actually about $60,000 less than it's shown, not more, but less. So, um, it is recommended that that be approved, and I believe that is the end of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Council?
I will make a motion to approve consent calendar items three, four, five, and six, if none are pulled.
Second.
Further discussion? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Oh, I'm going to have to modify my time.
And Mayor, may I just make a comment?
Of course.
Specifically to our directors, I, I wanted to take the vote first, and then just say to our directors, um, thank you very much for your patience over the last two weeks in allowing the subcommittee to have further discussions on the management agreement. Uh, it, it's very important to me to be a good steward, and the fiduciary responsibility that we sit for, and, and, um, it's important that we not make decisions when we're not fully aware of what the impacts of those decisions would be, as well as making sure that we fully understand the decisions that we're making. So, I just wanted to say thank you very much. So I just wanted to say thank you very much, I know that that created some unsettledness, and I apologize for not making a comment at that time, but we've moved on, so.
Very good, thank you, that was very well said.
Madam Mayor, may I thank, it was, may I thank the Mayor Pro Tem and Council Member Cassidy for meeting and discussing, thoroughly discussing the matter of the management compensation, and for their, and your support of city management.
Great, good. Number seven, public hearing.
Now, this is a, hopefully a 30-second item. This is the second, and then we're done. This is the second reading of an ordinance adopting the California Building Standards every three-year, California does it. You've already had the first reading of an ordinance, this is particularly with respect to fire sprinklers, but because of this specific ordinance, you have to have a public hearing. And so the, what we want to do is, we want to open the public hearing, see if there's any comments, close the public hearing, and then adopt the ordinance.
We understand the process.
Okay.
Okay, then I would like to open the public hearing.
Take the under.
Is there anybody who wants to talk about fire sprinklers?
I don't look like it.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. And do you want it?
Yeah, I'll move to, where the hell am I? Yeah, move to adopt the ordinance amending Title VIII of the Avalon Municipal Code and adopting the state building standards for codes as modified.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, and no further comments? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Mayor.
Oh, yes.
Could I just say that your actions on the fire code has made, will make Avalon safer from fire, and congratulations to council members and the council for that.
Thank you. Good night, Tony, meeting adjourned.
Good night, Tony.